Welcome, everyone, to the May 14th Eugene City Council Work Session. Welcome to -- actually, we don't have -- we have one audience out there. So, the first item up is committee reports. If you all want to report from these committees that are on the list. And then we'll come back and do a round of just items of interest. So I'll just see if there's anything happening with the Housing Policy Board.
Yes, quickly, as you recall, during our budget deliberations, we approved the Housing Policy Board's portion of the budget, which was the home funds that come through from the federal government and how those will be allocated. Where there is only one site left in the reserve, and they're not going to use that in this round. What they're looking to fund this time are renovations or changes to existing properties. And so at this point, a couple of the folks are actually talking with the county about purchasing foreclosed properties, renovating them, restoring them. In some cases, these properties have been sitting empty for years, renovating them and then making them available as low-income housing. And it's a very -- it's actually a great idea to take inventory that's otherwise not usable and turn it into usable housing. And the other nice part about it is, it maintains our dispersal policy where these are in existing neighborhoods. And they fix them up in a way that's very nice. And then they qualify folks to come in who will be consistent with the neighborhood. So it's a win all around. And the main thing is for the county to participate that way. As you know, Stephanie Jennings has moved over to be the manager of the Sustainable Cities Hut Grant. She's doing a great job with that. It's really going well. So she's still got her hand in the Housing Policy Board, but the other staff, Becky Walker and some of the others are -- Wheeler is handling that, and it's going very well. So that's pretty much where we are right now.
Thank you for that report. How about El Rapa?
Well, Mayor, you know, since we've had our budget process and El Rapa was part of the conversation, I really don't have anything new to report on El Rapa.
Do you want to talk about the PSCC?
The Public Safety Coordinating Committee Juvenile Subcommittee. So in front of you, I actually did some homework, and I left -- I printed up a couple of articles. We've been talking about, at the PSCC Youth Committee, things that are of interest are the disproportionate minority contact there. I'm hoping to get another year of grant funding to continue to work on that. The lack of beds at Ser Boo. Alicia's now Director of Youth Services. I'm not quite sure how that's going to play out. They're still playing that domino effect. So in front of you, I printed up a couple of articles. You know, we're talking about having a gang summit. And I put the notes in from the gang assessment meeting. But these are just -- the article is talking about how one child in three actually has a police contact before they're 23. And it's, you know, and there's more information there for you to read, but that was kind of the most shocking demographic that I'd seen in a while, so I just thought I would share that with you. I think it kind of plays into almost, you know, when we're looking at issues around gangs, you know, why are youth join gangs? I mean, I think that's one thing to consider is, you know, what kind of lives are they leading out there? How can we be preemptive around helping these children not choose that as a lifestyle? We don't have any action -- council action or support on an issue at this time. The other thing that's going to be happening this summer that has been happening in the past at least five summers that I know of, and I think it's probably longer, like 10, but I know that Rights of Passage is happening for the African-American youth this summer at LCC, where they take high school students and kind -- it's an enrichment program around their culture. And Puerto de los Abiertos do it. I know the Native Americans do it, and I think the Asian communities do it also. And that's always really good. I've gotten to speak to the Latino kids several different times. I want to say Jimmy Hernandez, but I know that's not his last name. I'm having trouble with his last name right now, but he definitely does a good job, and so does Greg Evans out there. So I think that's about it, Mayor.
How about Metro Wastewater Management Commission?
Sure. Later on this evening, at the council meeting, we're going to be asked to approve the Metro Wastewater Management Commission FY13 budget and the capital improvements program. So that's coming right up. The last couple of meetings have been pretty fairly routine. One thing I would like to give a brief update on is the two big ecosystem restoration, repairing, and shade projects that would result in water quality trading credits for the wastewater commission. It's hit a little bit of a snag. The State Department of Environmental Quality consulted with EPA, the feds, and they told them that the DEQ loan funds can only be used for capital projects, not for administration. They were hoping to be able to use the whole $650,000 of the loan, a very low-interest loan, for the whole project. And they've been told that the $200,000 administrative expense cannot be used. So everyone wants this project to work. All of the players do. And so everyone's kind of gone back to the drawing board, and it's -- I regard it as a temporary snag. And hopefully, in a very short time, they'll get it all figured out to make it move forward. It's basically planting trees along Cedar Creek and the Springfield Mill Race. That will lower the temperature of the water, and the water will be colder when it goes past the wastewater treatment plant. So that our effluent will not warm up the water as drastically as it would had this water been already warmed to begin with. So you get credits for that, trading credits, thermal load, all that stuff. So it's a -- you know, it's the first time a bricks-and-mortars construction grant is being applied to planting trees, a project like this. So it's kind of a first for Oregon, and it's so new. Everyone's, you know, they're kind of trying to get comfortable with the concept and figure out how to do it for -- because it's a first-time thing. So it's run into a little snag, but it's not going to kill the project. And I have a feeling they're going to get it all figured out pretty soon, and it'll be able to move ahead. It'll be very beneficial for the wastewater commission. That's about it.
So I have put before you guys a report on the ACT meeting. And I'm just going to briefly -- so that's the Lane Area Commission on Transportation. And we will note on that that Senator Pozanski came to speak to us on a territorial road project that he's met with ODOT to discuss concerning the safety and mobility, a territorial road for cyclists and motor vehicles. You'll recall that we had a cyclist death on that territorial road. He's interested in getting it fixed. His pay is estimated at $7.5 million, so it's not a small project. And the request is for the ACT to review and give feedback. So we'll be hearing more about that. Then the part that I thought was interesting for all of you, which continues, and we've talked about it before, but it's just continuing along, is ODOT is going through substantial change in how they go about doing their business, in part because of the financial challenges. And they are trying to break down their silos. So the -- an example of this is the Oregon Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant Program is being combined with the Transportation Enhancement Program. One application process for both of those. And another is in the STIP project, that's our major transportation prioritization, and that the role of the Area Commission on Transportation is expanding. They're shifting away from highways to serve more multimodal needs. This means they're moving away, and this is a big deal for us on MPC and elsewhere. They're not breaking into MOD and preservation and all those things that they used to with the different pots. They're putting the pots all together. So, and looking for the overall best transportation strategies. And they'll be looking at cost and benefits over lifetimes to guide those decisions. So it's another thing we've been talking a lot about, but it's a big change. That includes the environmental, economic, health, land use, material use, and energy use. And this is kind of the direction we're doing in all of our planning, transportation planning efforts. So I think we're right in tune with it. Another new emphasis will be closer work with transit and rail. Before, they had them all separate, transit separate from the regular transportation system, and rail was separate from the regular transportation system. But that is no longer going to be the case. Funding and community involvement for maximum benefit. So this reminds us of the expected important role of transit in ODOT planning and funding. And again, our emphasis on transportation quarters and envision Eugene, which fits right in with the state planning and funding efforts. I just wanted to bring you up to speed. That is a really big shift in the way they do business, and they're continuing to move in that direction, and they're continuing to put their money, such as it is, in that direction. So I wanted you guys to be up to speed on that. So I'm going to go around. Pat, you have something you want to?
I do. I've had a chance to be a part and witness a project that got underway next to Wamette High School. It's the BETHS Housing Project. And it's a team effort that's been going on for a while, but they dedicated the start of two houses at the corner of -- at the junction of Dove Lane and Echo Hollow. It's two houses that were owned by the Bethel School District.
The one John's gone to the meeting?
John, I was going to mention that John Rees has been instrumental in making this happen.
He's on a trip to --
Yeah.
-- funding for that right now.
Yeah, John is -- most of us probably know that John was a colonel in the Army, and full colonel. That's a bird. Yeah. But he takes it very, very seriously, the fact that Oregon Army National Guardsmen, men and women, are coming back and having difficulty with jobs and with housing. So the project, when I went there, it was pretty remarkable. I got there about an hour after the work crews arrived, and by the time I got there, the Eugene firefighters had gotten there before me, and the houses were completely gutted. It's amazing. There's like a swarm of bees went into that place, and the houses were completely gutted within one hour. And they were digging ditches, and a number of them were building a fence. And as I stood there, in 45 minutes, they built a fence, like a six-foot cedar fence. The posts had already been set. It's just amazing how quickly this went. And it's two very nice houses in a very good location. And it's a team effort. It's Saint Vincent de Paul. Terry McDonald was there. John was there. John Rees, the Home Builders Association. Ed McMahon was there. Colt Gill, the superintendent of schools, and a couple of Bethel School Board members were there. So it was just a huge team effort, and it's amazing. It's only two houses, but you know what? It's two houses more than we had before. And that's the way John Rees looked at it. And John Rees and everybody are just really rolling their sleeves up again, a lot of -- I wish he were here to bask in the warmth of the, you know, the compliments of, you know, the fact that he's taken so much of his own spare time. And the firefighters were there. You know, these men and women worked 24 hours straight, get off work and come and rip a house down. It's an amazing thing. The other thing I wanted to say is another compliment, this one to Councilor Brown. A few weeks ago, you spoke about McKenzie Watershed Council, and you talked about how our mountains are like big sponges that release the water regularly over the summer. I was able to use that several times. I didn't know that before you brought that up here.
I didn't either, before I went to that meeting.
Well, you shared it with us. And that's, you know, and I was listening to you speaking tonight, and it's interesting that whenever you talk, you don't just talk about meetings that happen. You give substance regarding the meetings. I really appreciate that, George. Thank you.
Eddie?
I want to respond to two things that have been said. First, that's really good news about ODOT. And I think focusing on rail and multimodal, other kinds of multimodal is really a good thing. I, in relation to the rail, I think we all should ride the train whenever we get a chance to support the rail system. And in relation to that, the League of Oregon Cities is meeting in Salem this year in September. And I think it would be good if we would all go up by train, if we would all go to start with, and then go up by train if we go. About the foreclosed properties that are being saved, I would -- I wish that there was some effort to get them back to the person who owned them before they were foreclosed. When I hear about that, people making profits and giving them to someone else, I always think of who was there and lost the home. That is -- and then I have a question from two constituents about why the fire department buys gas at the most expensive station in town. I'd just like to know if there is some policy about where they get gasoline. These are people who said they've observed them going into a place that they think they should be able to buy it less -- I shouldn't say cheaper, less expensively. I went to Southeast Neighbors Meeting last week, I think it was last week. And once again, where they are -- they, we are discussing the Amazon Headwaters. There's another housing proposal going to the city, and it's a place where houses should not be built. And the citizens, there was a good turnout at the meeting because people are really upset every time they hear about possible development of that land, which is really important to our air and water.
Is there an actual proposal?
Yes, there's a proposal right now.
Let me just take it.
They're trying again. And so lots of people were there, hoping that that can be stopped.
Do you have any information about that?
If it doesn't succeed.
Mike?
Pass, Mayor.
Okay, George?
Yeah, last week, I went to the Hartle Neighborhood Association meeting. Number of topics. Representative Nathanson was there, gave a brief synopsis of this year's state shortened session. Commissioner John Brown from E-Web was there and talked about the increase of rates and how that the E-Web Board is not getting very big turnouts at these public hearings for the increase in the rates. And he says if he doesn't have input, he's, you know, he doesn't, he's going to have to vote the way he thinks is right. So he's encouraging people to contact him if they have any questions or comments about the E-Web rates. Aaron Box, who's the pastor at the North Park Community Church, is also on the board, gave a little wrap-up of the Hartle Serves, which is the Feed Hope Update we did this spring. And between the spring and the winter breaks, there were over 3,000 meals passed out to kids that qualify for the free food program. In fact, the spring collection this year, or this time, Papa's Pizza got involved in it. In the wintertime, we did a food drive where people put food out on their front torches, and members of the group went and picked up the food. This year, it was, in addition to Trader Joe's again helping out, Papa's Pizza allowed food to be collected there as well as the school. And we did so well that there were actually 50 bags left over that they're going to be passing out at the end of the school year for some of these kids. So it's going to continue to help feed some of these kids. Since the National Night Out has been canceled this year, the Hartle Neighborhood is having their Neighborhood Party on June 16th in lieu of the National Night Out. And it's going to be at the North Park Community Church from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Friday the 16th. 26th of June is Willackenzy Crossing Grand Opening and Ice Cream Social. It's located next to the Willackenzy Grange, which, by the way, was one of the recipients of the Neighborhood Matching Grants this year. And Sherry Shoemaker is heading that up. And we should, they've already put a new gutter up and stuff, so they're going to be painting that one pretty quick. And then Captain Stronach, Rich Stronach, who retired at the end of March, April. Anyway, recently retired, was attending our meetings as the commander of the side of town, the east side of town. And the Neighborhood Association gave him a little bit of a special recognition for the time and effort that he put in. Of the four or five years that he was coming to the meetings, he only missed one. So that's a pretty good, pretty good dedication on his part to our neighborhood. And there's some other things coming up later on in the summer, but we'll probably forget about them, and I'll have to just remind people anyway. So we'll do that later on.
Chris?
Oh, one other thing. I forgot. We had the election of the Board, and Jennifer Yen is the new chair. Mark Callahan is the vice chair. And our Budget Committee member, Chelsea Clinton, was elected as recorder treasurer. So we have the Board of Officers, or Chair.
Yes?
Just one thing to add is that we actually executed, and I signed, the new contract with the new executive director for Lane Council of Governments, Brenda Wilson. So she will now officially begin on July 1st, and she'll have a little bit of an overlap period with George Kleppel. And John Rees has been really nice about letting her have a lot of time to have that catch-up and get up to speed, and really appreciate the effort the city has made to help that be a smooth transition. I'm really looking forward to it. I think there's a lot of real excitement that's coming around, and I think Brenda's really looking forward to it. And so we're real pleased as she moves into that new role, and we'll all get to see her again in hopefully what will be a real advancement on her career as well, as a help to the area. So we're real pleased about that.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report on a few things that I've done this last couple of weeks. First of all, John, our city manager, met me over in the west side, and him and I walked down north Seneca, took a tour of that area to look at the endangered species of plants in those big, three-deep puddles. So hopefully, he said that, you know, he talked to Kurt about it so that maybe we can get some, a resolution for that neighborhood. The store at the corner of Roosevelt and Garfield was demolished. The city bought it for an expansion on its public works property, and the neighbors have decided that they want it to be beautified and put an opening for my neighborhood, our neighborhood there. So I met with them last Friday, and we kind of walked on the site and kind of conceptually were looking at things. So hopefully, something positive will come out of that. Johnny Medlin informed me that he's going to be retiring in six weeks. And so I'm really sad to hear that, because he really has contributed to my success in this, in this time as a councillor. I was also out at Ferndale Park, out River Road. The community there, they're really pushing to try and get that place, get the park developed. They're really kind of concerned that they've been on the list so long, and nothing has happened. And so, and then they wanted some road improvements. And I think that that's a county road, so I encouraged them to contact our commissioners to see if they have any opportunities for the road improvements that they want. And I told them I would be talking to John about the issues with the parks. The other thing I wanted to report on, which I thought was really interesting, and I'm going to pronounce his name wrong, but Peace Health, Pacific Source, LIPA, McKenzie Willamette, I think there was five sponsors total. I don't know who the other sponsors were. The Medical Society, they sponsored a young man to come to our community named Abdul Gawanda. And he is a surgeon who is a very well-written young man. He writes for The New Yorker. And he gave a very impassioned speech about people in our community that are, that are the higher-end users of the resources that we have available. And what resonated with me in his speech was, he made a comment that if we took 1,000 of the higher-end users of the resources, ERs, EMS, police, people who are out on the street, people who are not on the street but just have a lot of needs, if we took 1,000 of them and dealt with those issues, that we would lower our costs by 60% of what's being spent on dealing with these people. And that really kind of, that's kind of an interesting little challenge. I also really appreciated one of, another comment that he made. He talked about how the medical world, there's a team effort, and he made the comment that there was one piece missing that he did not speak of, which was a patient advocate. And he alluded that the board of any organization was the advocate, that the board of the hospital or of LIPA or of any of these organizations should be accessible to the clients that they serve. And I thought that was really good. So that's it. Thank you.
Alan?
Couple of meetings coming up in my part of town. Fairmont Neighborhood tomorrow evening at 7:00. Laurel Hill Valley Neighbors Wednesday at 7:00. And Souna, actually, have another general meeting at the same time, Laurel Hill Valley on Wednesday. So lots of Neighborhood Association meetings coming up real shortly. That'll be it.
Thank you, Mayor. I got up bright and early this morning and went down to City Hall to help the mayor greet our sister-city delegation from Kathmandu. And kind of in the spur of the moment, decided to, they had some extra room in their bus. And so I hopped on the bus and toured, went with them, spent the whole rest of the morning and half the afternoon. They're really here to learn about stuff. It's not just big party time for them. They are here. Today, we went to the County Transfer Station in Glenwood of, you know, the trash transfer station, toured the hazardous waste drop-off, toured the, got an explanation of the whole recycling effort, and then the pit where things are stored for transfer. Then we went to Short Mountain and toured the Emerald Peoples Utility District's electrical generation plant from the methane gas, learned how the, saw a demonstration of the piping system to collect the gas. And went to the leachate filtering plant that the water goes through and comes out. You've got to do something with it if it's highly toxic, so that has to be dealt with, too. So, and then they went off to go to E-Web and then to the Hayden Bridge Water Purification Plant on the McKenzie. That's when I dropped out. And then that's a full day for them. And then tomorrow, they're going to go to the wastewater treatment plant, go to a household garbage composting facility in Salem, and then come back here and go to Rexius for the commercial composting, and go to a company here in town that makes things, assembly line, to pick out and sort recycling, which we don't use here, and no one uses it in town, but the company's out in West Eugene, and they sell these systems all over the United States. So they're going to tour that. And then Wednesday is devoted to high-tech stuff. They're going to go to the U of O, as well, the city's Information Technology Department, then to the U of O, to their computer department, LCC's computer department, and meet with the Chamber of Commerce in the afternoon to see if, start the conversation about business opportunities, back and forth. You know, they want, they want to learn about the information systems to handle the other things that they want to institute, the waste stream and recycling. And they will need help with that, and we have people here in town that could help them do it. It could be a business opportunity. And that's about it. I just want to tell people that the opening reception, there's a photograph exhibition called the Chitra Kar Collection of photographs from Nepal, starting in 1890. It's at the New Zone Gallery, 164 West Broadway. And it'll be open Tuesday through Saturday, noon to 6:00 p.m. And the reception's this evening, but we'll, of course, be at our meeting. But I encourage people to go and stop by and see what it looks like in our sister-city, sister-country. Thank you.
I will just add that this is a gift they brought to our city, from Kathmandu. And I want to encourage folks from Eugene, you know, we have gifts that have been brought to us from our sister-cities, all four of them, in the City Hall Council, the chambers out there. So you can see all those things if you want to come by and look at it. We really appreciate this. They brought us a hanging of the cycle of life, too. And I'll pass that around for everybody. So it's a pleasure to have them. We're glad they're here. We hope that we're contributing to the useful knowledge for them, and it'll strengthen the relationship. They're very interested in that. And you've all been invited to their, to dinner with them on Wednesday evening. I know Betty and George are going to make it. If anybody else can, please let Margaret know right away. They'd really love to have the opportunity to speak with all of you. The one other thing I wanted to bring up is, we had a delegation of about 45 people from Nashville, Tennessee this last week. They came with a larger delegation of over 100 people to look at transportation in Portland and in Eugene. And then specifically, they came to look at MX. And that's why they came down here to look at our, our mass transit system is known all over the country and internationally, and they are going to build, they want to model theirs after ours. So that's why they came down, came over to look at it. So it was a great meeting, and Mayor Lundberg and I helped host that. We were, it was a great opportunity for us and a compliment to our community. So with that... Um...
Yeah, I'll take, thank you, Mayor. A dual opportunity to say, John Rees is not here this week. He's in Washington, DC with Chief Kearns and the Killeen family, and other small delegation from Eugene representing us for National Police Week, which, I'm just going to read a little, little blurb here, so that's why I'm here, not John. "A National Police Week, which occurs each year during the week in which May 15th falls, recognizes the service and sacrifice of U.S. law enforcement. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others." I know they had a candlelight vigil, I think, yesterday. Officer Killeen's name was added to the memorial, along with 361 other officers. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Eugene Police Department and let you know that was happening this week.
Join you in thanking the police department, and we wish we didn't have to add one more person to that. Well, ever.
One a day.
That it, Sarah?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll move on to the next part of our meeting, and this is the tri annual report to City Council from the police auditor. Mark Isner, welcome.
Hi. Am I supposed to arrange the PowerPoint?
Is there a show?
Is there a PowerPoint?
Is there a song and dance?
Was there supposed to be? Yeah. I do, yeah. I also have handouts.
(mimicking a guitar playing)
Just in case.
Overhit.
No.
Little song.
It'll say May 4th.
Oh, my gosh. Chris Pryor. Jeez.
Somebody help.
To actually think it was funny.
I thought it was funny.
Bless his.
I have a copy somewhere.
This is kind of a gamble to my performance review next month, and so I take the opportunity to do this about three times a year, let you know where we're at in terms of some of the things that we've been working on and some of the things that we'd like to work on. So I'll start while she's still getting the technology going. Some of the things that we've done fairly recently, I think, is all good things. I think we've had a significant impact on the changes in the search and seizure policy when I came here. It was brief, and I think that has been added significant changes to it, which I think are helpful for the department. Same with the K9s, and also the vehicle pursuits. When I came here, I was a little bit concerned about how those were being managed, both by officers and by supervisors, and I think that we're seeing stronger roles by supervisors in terms of managing the police pursuits. Sometimes when the adrenaline gets going, especially with the young officers, it's a, it's a little bit more difficult to control, but we've had a couple cases recently where thankfully, nothing bad has happened, but something bad could have happened. And so we've sustained those in terms of the allegations on those cases. And again, I think the biggest step has been that, there's been a lot of conversation in the management of the police department about how to do that better, and I think that's where we really want to go in terms of the big picture. Some of the policy issues in the future that both we've been dealing with and the Civilian Review Board has been dealing with is, we did a case recently about a person who was arrested, kind of one of the regular folks downtown that has a little bit too much to drink, and then gets physical with another one of his friends, and then the officers are called. And he decided that he was going to, for lack of a better term, I suppose, engage in self-destructive behavior in a cruiser. And so that's a very difficult thing for officers to have to deal with, and how to manage that. Back in the day, it used to be that they would just use mace or pepper spray, but that's kind of been frowned upon over the last 10 or 15 years. So what they've been trying to do is take them back out and get them restrained a little bit more with the hobble restraints and getting their legs restrained. But I think it was a good illustration for the board and for the CRB where they had, on the ICV, literally, the police cruiser was shuddering at, at the actions of this person, so we had a good discussion about what possibly could be done about that, and then perhaps maybe go to the police commission with that point in time. Another issue which has kind of been on the plate for us, having experienced some of these situations in Cincinnati, and we're kind of clicking through this with the handout, thank you. And is, and it might not seem as major to some as it is in my mind, is sometimes arrestees are rejected into jail for medical reasons. Somebody brings in someone, and they complain about an injury or something, and then they're examined by the nurse, and the nurse declines to accept them. And there's not any policy in place in terms of what to do after that. So we're leaving a lot to an officer's discretion to decide whether they should just cite the person and let him go, or whether they should call paramedics, or whether they should take him to a hospital. So what we've proposed, at least for the police commission to look at, is to have some set policy about what to do when the nurse rejects someone at the jail. My recommendation would be is that the officer first talk to the nurse directly to see if the person needs immediate transport by paramedic, or if the officer can take the person there themselves. And then the officer also have a conversation with their supervisor to ensure that we don't put ourselves at risk from a liability standpoint under those circumstances. But not a lot of departments in the country, at least the ones I researched, have a policy for something like that. But again, I know that we've experienced it before in Cincinnati, and it was a problem for us because when the person who was arrested was cited and turned loose, then had, he had a pretty significant medical problem. So we don't want that here in our area. So again, it's something that's, I think, kind of new for the department. Yes, Alan?
Why are they, why would the nurse reject them because they don't have the facility or the capability to deal with them?
They're not medically stable.
Yeah, a nurse determines that. I think that's a good answer. They're not medically stable. The individual that we were talking about complained of pain to a side, and not real sure, again, the conversation that occurred, but at the end of the day, the jail said, we're not taking them. Then the street officer is left with a number of decision points that we would prefer that we have a policy or someone else making that decision rather than just a street officer because I don't think, I'm not sure if we even have any that are even param medically trained. I know that's one of the things that we did in Cincinnati, was offered some incentives for some of the officers to be trained, and then as paramedics. But again, I think with the numbers, it might not be realistic here, so. But in any case, someone else should be helping that officer make that decision. Another situation, if you read, yes?
So that's, that's okay. I mean, it'd be a good idea if we had a policy regarding it, but I would hope that it would coincide or be in concert with whatever the jail has, because I'm assuming that they do, because I know that we've gotten clients from there before in the emergency room, and I don't remember who was doing the transporting, but that was their whole issue, that they were not considered medically stable for jail. So they obviously have something already in place, so I would hope that, make sure whatever it is, it's in concert, whatever the policy changes, that it works with.
So I guess we're going to ask questions as we go along, so I will be glad to follow.
(laughing)
Fine.
All right.
The other...
What did I say?
The next issue, which of course, I think is, in one sense, we're, we're at least looking at some of these big-picture issues as opposed to having to tackle a lot of other things, is also, we had an issue, if you read last week's newsletter, about a person who needed to use the bathroom during a DUI arrest. We have an ex-prosecutor on our board, so we had quite a discussion about how that should go, and I think the value of the oversight board is a different perspective, because I think officers are sometimes trained, particularly the less experienced officers, in a very linear process. And so any deviation from that is probably something that might cause some confusion. So we did have some discussion about it. I think the real, one of the real values that came from that is, again, with the supervisors and the managers in the police department, there's been a lot of talk about this case. And I would say that for every, now, we did the, he shouldn't, should have, should not have done anything until after they completed the DUI processes, that there's others that are saying, no, they should have accommodated this person's need during that process and not tarnished the linear DUI process. So we, there has been a lot of discussion about that, and I'm hopeful that somewhere along the line, there'll be the combination of getting your work product to the point that you needed to get to, and at the same time, have some compassion for some folks as well. So that's what I'm hopeful that the outcome will be. Another thing that we've had some preliminary discussions about is presence arrests. In Ohio, my home state, some things officers have to witness for them to take someone to jail. In Oregon, and I think Wyoming, at least this side of the Rockies, is you don't have to do that. So sometimes, a couple hours after a neighbor causing a noise complaint, and it might be a problem, a problem from the past, someone ends up getting taken to jail for something that occurred supposedly several hours before. And that's pretty much guaranteed to generate a complaint in our office. So I'm not quite sure what the answer is, other than at least, we need to have a discussion about it, because certainly, it's hard to make an argument for jail beds when someone who's, when someone's taken to jail for a noise complaint that occurred two hours prior and is not occurring at the moment that the officer arrives. So I think it's a discussion that we need to have, and we're just kind of starting to do some research on it. I can appreciate the neighbor's perspective, I can appreciate the person who's arrested perspective, but I think we have to have some sort of consistency in, in these sort of non-presence-type situations where someone maybe could be cited instead of taken to jail. So again, we're just kind of starting that conversation. Another conversation that we're starting to have, and I think we kind of stumbled through the first one, and I suppose just because it's something different for us, is employees of the police department are starting to complain about their supervisor evaluations and statements, and where it crosses the line from a supervisor-employee relationship to whether the auditor or ought to be involved, or if there's an allegation of misconduct. So an employee might say, well, that supervisor on my evaluation, that's just false, they're lying, they're being untruthful, or whatever, to punish me. So we're starting to have those conversations with HR because it's a difficult issue, and the ordinance does give us some leeway in terms of employees' complaints about other employees, but I'm kind of thinking when the disordance was designed, that that wasn't where folks were going with that. So again, we're having some conversations. I know Tom Patterson in HR is very much involved in contract negotiations, so it's probably a little bit slower than we would like, but I don't think we want to get to the point where we're starting to look at, at things where an employee thinks that their supervisor's not being completely truthful in an evaluation, and then that goes to the auditors of office as opposed to the grievance process or something like that, particularly for the bargaining units. But we've had a couple of those that have caught us a little bit by surprise, and that have a lot of variables in the equation, and so we're starting to piece those together to try to have a more consistent linear, here we go, linear process to look at those kinds of things. So that's kind of what's new on our plate fairly recently. With regard to the officer-involved shooting, it's supposed to go to the Use of Force Review Board, probably in late June. Still not thrilled about the process, but right now, it's the way the state law is written. And actually, when I went to the PERF Conference in Washington, D.C., I brought that up as an issue, and how, in a controversial-type shooting, how the current process may, to some degree, erode some of the community trust in terms of how the process might work. So I'm not quite sure what angle I want to go at it yet, because again, it's state law, and, and so we have to follow what the state law is, but we may be able to try to sort of stretch the boundaries a little bit about how we might be better, best prepared to respond. And I actually had support from Chief Ramsey from Philadelphia, who was, used to be police chief in D.C. and Chicago, and so, and obviously, they have a lot more controversial things that go on there than we do here on a, on a scale basis. So again, it's something that we still need to have some conversations about. Yes, Alan? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, ma'am.
What's PERF and what's your concern?
I'm sorry. The Police Executive Research Forum. Currently, when you do a process, and Force Science Institute, which has done a lot of studies of officer-involved shootings, and have done some very good studies of officer-involved shootings, obviously a traumatic event for the person who got shot, as well as the person who does the shooting. And so then there has been studies about memory, memory recall, time to decompress, those sorts of things. So now, the recommendation is that officers have 48 to 72 hours to decompress, if you will, before they give a version of what happens, that they're neither mirandized nor given administrative warnings, so in other words, it becomes a voluntary statement. I've been doing officer-involved shootings, I think my first one was in 1986, and it was a different process, and it moved more quickly than perhaps the science is suggesting that it moved now. And so I'm just trying to find some equilibrium, if we ever have something controversial that we're going to be able to do things in that manner. Also, within that 48 to 72-hour period, the officer's allowed to review all the material, all the ICV, everything that occurred prior to the shooting. So is it his memory that, in terms of shooting, or is it memory based on the information that's provided from them post-shooting? And we had one years and years ago in Cincinnati where the officer gave his version of what happened, and it just so happened, and this was in the new era of ICV, that a female officer came right around the corner and captured everything, which was contrary to the officer's statement and his justification. Had he had the opportunity to review all the material prior to that, I'm not sure that his answers to the questions would have been the same, and that he may still have, he might have got fired, but I think he would have had a better case for arbitration in terms of that sort of thing. So again, it's find that balancing act where there's a certain community expectation that people who, the only people in this country who have the right to take other people's lives have a certain, accept a certain responsibility to remember things like they're supposed to remember them, and also have the mindset to remember those things, how that weighs versus what, and the community expectations versus, again, decompressing psychologically and trying to, to remember something that was also very traumatic. So that's kind of where we're at. PERF, I'm sorry, is Police Executive Research Forum. I know we go acronym crazy sometimes, so. And I'll also talk about that at the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. I was asked, you know, what I, whether I think an officer should have 48 to 72 hours to do something like that, and the only answer I could give is I've never shot anyone, so I don't know what sort of psychological thing someone goes through like that. My point was that I'm not sure, in a controversial-type situation, that the community is, is going to be okay with that sort of situation. And so just having a conversation about it and doing what we can do to ensure that the community reaction to something controversial is the understanding of why processes are the way they are. So that's where we're at on that. For the Civilian Review Board, they're, they're attending a lot of training, Kids First, they went out to the Mission, the Buckley House. I think next month, they're going to Forensics because they, they're curious about forensics. We've been doubling, doubling up on cases the last couple months because they've had to make some difficult decisions, just like last week with the case about the person who had to use the bathroom. It's a difficult decision to weigh the law enforcement interest versus the community and compassion kind of issues. And so they've really done a nice job. We had a case of a racial profiling complaint that we looked at and analyzed, and probably had a couple of hiccups along the way in terms of how, where we want the administrative investigation to go concurrently with the court case. We, in fact, then turned up evidence which probably hurt this person in the court case because we were also conducting the administrative investigation, given the seriousness of the complaint. So, and whether good or bad, the evidence had to be brought forward. Again, there are, they work very hard, they study the material, I think they provide fair and independent evaluations of our office, NIA. Someone just mentioned the other day is, oh, they just have an agenda, and I would say that that is the farthest thing from the truth for any of the folks that are on the CRB. I think they really want to give fair and impartial evaluations of the things that are occurring, and I think they hold us to a very high standard. So really, an enjoyable group to work with. Our annual report, we're almost... Our annual report, we're almost finished. Ours is normally about 60 or 70 pages because we like to discuss every case and put as much information and be as transparent as possible within the constraints of the Oregon Public Records Law. We're going to, this year, we're going to look at each use-of-force case because we just really haven't that many, had that many. So, we have the opportunity to take a look at each one. We have a 26% sustained rate, which is high in one sense, but I also think that we have a higher standard in terms of what's an allegation than in some other places. Most oversight agencies are anywhere between 3% and 10% on a sustained rate. Our complaints are up about 10%. Some of the sustains deal with police communications that are both internal and external. And so, I think one of the things that we're trying to come up with is maybe a better classification formula for those kinds of things in terms of, that they really tried hard to do something, but they just made an error as opposed to just not being, or being neglectful or something like that. So, we're going to look at those a little bit because it is a very difficult job for them. And they do have to make a lot of split-second decisions in there, and they handle an awful lot of calls. So, at the same time, we want to make sure that public safety is not compromised when they are doing their jobs. So, we're looking at those things very closely. We're getting some feedback from complainants. In this next newsletter, you're going to see a sample of one of the letters that we write because we write very involved letters about why we make the decisions that we would make. It's usually about a three-to-five-page letter that explains everything that we've done and the whole process and our decisions. Still not where we want to be in terms of getting feedback. We were in the middle of negotiations with Dave, I forget his last name, from Community Mediation Service to maybe have them reach out for us. There's a cost involved with that. And then he'd left the agency, so we're kind of back to square one. So, I figure probably sometime later this year, maybe we're going to work with them to try to get that sort of independent feedback on some of these cases that we do and have them help us do that so that no one thinks that we're kind of working on it ourselves. Complaint trends, still haven't met very many people who are happy when they get traffic tickets. And so, again, a lot of folks just don't understand the process. I don't think they ever will because they're just looking to reach out to somebody to help them get through. When they see what that maximum fine is on that ticket, that's a pretty scary thing for most people when it's $260 to $300 to $400. That's, they just see what the maximum is there. I don't think the judge normally puts that on them. But when they see that, then they get pretty wound up about it. So, it's interesting to deal with folks who are just really unhappy about getting those tickets. It seems like we've been dealing with a lot of folks who have mental health issues. A lot of people are coming to our office who have mental health issues. And it's been very difficult for us. I, one of the things for Lee and I both is, we've got to figure out how to, well, we've got to get more training in dealing with it. And we're also networking more with the Human Rights Commission because I know Raquel is trained on that.
Alan, do you have a question right now?
No, that's fine. Again, our force complaints are pretty low. They're just, it's a blessing, comparatively speaking. I think that they work very hard to minimize their use of force on issues. Again, we have several of these presence issues a year where officers don't witness somewhat of a minor misdemeanor kind of thing. But after the course of a preliminary investigation, they decide to make a physical arrest for something that may have happened several hours before. And I can pretty much guarantee that we're going to see a complaint involved with that. And then, one of the things that I've talked to the chief about, and I think he's in agreement with me, is just trying to widen the compassion grid a little bit. Sometimes not be so linear on some of these issues. There was a new study done out in New York, I forget which university, that showed that a more positive approach by an officer is less likely to lead to violence and resistance. I think the school of thought is that if you really come down hard on somebody initially, that you're more likely to get compliance. But this comprehensive study actually has the opposite theory and I think proven through their research. So, I know, again, I've talked to the chief about this. Let's see, hustle through here now. Meet regularly with Judge Allen about some of the issues that he talks about. I know you guys supervise him. PERF Conference, Police Executive Research Forum, which was in Washington. Last year, it was in Seattle, so I guess we had to go to the other side of the continent. And they talked a lot about use-of-force issues, particularly with dealing with people with mental illnesses because, just like the rest of us, all the state funding is starting to dry up for that. It was really interesting to hear some of the other jurisdictional responses to some of the Occupy issues. And in particular, I really liked the presentation by the woman who's in charge of the National Park Police and what they did in Washington, DC. And I kind of think you're seeing the example of it over here at the federal building where there's nothing wrong with having shelter, but you're not allowed to camp overnight on National Park property in Washington, DC. So, they're very, that's what the rule is. You can have a shelter, but there'll be no camping supplies, that sort of thing. And, again, I think that that response is spreading a little bit within the federal government because she seems very respectful of people exhibiting their First Amendment rights. But, again, within the rules of the National Park system, I think that it's interesting. Philadelphia had a very different situation because, right where the demonstration was, where they were trying to do some construction work, so it kind of interfered with that. And Portland, I think you're all in tune with some of the things that are going on in Portland. And he had some of the largest demonstrations in the nation, quite honestly. And so, that was some of the challenges that they had. In terms of our budget, just like everybody else, it's just starting to tighten up and kind of losing a little bit of a cushion, at least this year, for that investigative piece that we've had. We still give about $20,000 or $25,000 back this year. I've never, since I've been here, this is the third year, I've never had a stable budget because of personnel changes and vacancies and my vacancies and all those kinds of things. So, one of these days, I'll actually have a blueprint to work off of rather than all the changes and things that we've had to deal with. Newsletter, the feedback's been very positive. I haven't got a lot of pushback, except initially, again, we try to be as informative as possible without naming names. And I think that we've been successful at doing that. I think we're proud of the work we do. And we want to try to communicate as best as we can in the community and the work that we're doing. And so far, again, I think it's been pretty smooth. I haven't had any interference from anybody in any organization about what we put in there. It's Lee and I, and that's it. And so, I think that that's a good thing. Maybe it makes us a little bit more vulnerable, but certainly, no one's tried to interfere with what we publish or what we do. So, performance evaluation in June, as I said, I think that's Be Kind to Auditor Month, actually, is June. So, the other issue that we've had is, NIA's been turning over reports in about 60 days, but then there's about another 60 days for decisions, discipline, and service to the officers. So, we're trying to shorten that timeframe up so that we can get answers back to complaints a little more quickly. I think still, in the industry, I think we benchmark very well against other oversight agencies. Some take years to look at cases and things like that. And so, we want to make sure that we get things to the CRB as quickly as we can. And, again, Lee and I are starting to study how we can have a classification matrix to be more consistent with the path of cases and complaints that we do. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. I knew it'd take longer than I wanted to. I tried. Any questions from anybody?
Do you have any questions? I just want to ask one myself. Is the, I don't know the answer. Is there a link to your newsletter right on the city website?
There is off the auditor's website. I'm not sure if it's on, I don't think it's on the homepage for the city. But it's off ours with the minutes and things like that and on the auditor's site.
So, you go straight to the auditor piece and then there's a link there?
Yeah, yeah.
The only difficulty with that is if people don't know it's there, then they don't know to go there to get it. So, I don't know how we might work on making more people aware. But it is a really, I think it's a really good newsletter and very informative and will really help the public understand the work that you do on a regular basis and what you're trying to do. Are you able to get that out there?
I wish we, I wish the city, I proposed this years ago, I think Minneapolis does it, where, that we just push out information to people that want to subscribe to certain areas. And there's some companies that do that, and they do it very well. And I think that that would be a great help. I know that, and from a commerce standpoint, for example, every week, United Airlines, if, I'm not plugging anybody, but they push, and all the airlines, push out their sales every week. They don't wait for me to go to their website and try to find it or anything else. And there's some services that can set up a subscription service where people have a checkbox of what they want to get pushed out to them from their local government. And I think that would work very well in Eugene because we have a very engaged community. But to expect people to go in every day and start fishing through the website with tens of thousands of tables, I think is a little bit difficult. But if we're pushing things out to them, that is of interest to them. I think that, I think, again, I think that's just good business and good government.
That's a good idea. I don't think people would, when people say, "Oh, you can find out on the website." I don't think people spend their lives looking at the Eugene website to see if anything happened.
We've got more people.
I have, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but about the complaints about the supervisors, it seems to me that it wouldn't be a function of the auditor. It seems that those kind of complaints could go, should go to the city manager, who is the boss of the supervisor, or somewhere besides the auditor. I think that's just not...
I agree with you 100%. I have a human resources department here, and I worked in human resources.
Yeah, maybe human resources. But it's not, that's not what you're for, is to do employee complaints. Different thing. Thanks.
Alan?
I agree with that. But my question was about the last bullet, which I don't quite understand.
The, it's trying to find, for example, when an allegation, to define better, like when an allegation, when a complaint should be an allegation, discourtesy, for example, whether it should be a service complaint, like the officer maybe was rude or yelled at me as opposed to the officer cursing at them, that sort of thing. I think we've differentiated that without putting it on paper. And I think we need to put it on paper.
With structure.
Yeah. What level of force sort of goes one way or the other, like tight handcuffs. Again, because what appears to me to be a great amount of restraint and force, comparatively speaking, to where I've seen it other places and studied it at other places, something like tight handcuffs kind of sort of is in the moderate range for Eugene, whereas a lot of other places, it might be at a low range. Or pepper spray. Most police officials consider pepper spray to be a low level of force. If you're the recipient of that, I'm not sure that you think it is. But, so, again, trying to sort of find a more structured, defined way of letting the officers also know that sort of what the expectations are and what might occur would be better for us.
Okay, makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey.
Are you in the executive session?
PERF.
The Eugene City Council will now meet executive session to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.66028. Representatives in the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members in the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed to report on any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session. Well, we've gone into our regular conversation.